The township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board to order. It's Monday, January 28th, and it's 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given and it's being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6 at sec of the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act. Ask you to please rise. Fudge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll open the meeting for anything, excuse me, anything that's not on the agenda for this evening. Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aperelik?
Here.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez?
Here.
Mr. Mandell?
Here.
Mr. Mealy?
Here.
Chairman Keller?
Here.
Also with us tonight, we have Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Ms. Favate?
Here.
And Mr. Canjiano?
Here.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the resolution for RD Realty. Someone would like to move a second?
Let me just add that I forwarded to Nora revised copy today that reflects the fact that it's now 2019 and not 2018.
Okay. Still catching up, are you?
A little bit.
Some moved.
Second, Dinsmore.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aperelik?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Mandell?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman Keller?
Yes. All right, approval of the minutes. Nora emailed them to everyone. If someone would please move approval of the minutes listed on the agenda.
Some move.
That's 1119, 18, and 1217, 18, right?
Right.
Right.
Good. Yep. Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Aperelik?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mandell for the 1217, 19. Chairman Keller?
Yes.
Can I ask who, uh, made the motion?
Aperelik. Mr. Aperelik.
Thank you.
You, you emailed the January 7th minutes. Do you want those approved now, too?
We'll do it at the next meeting.
Do a next meeting?
Give everyone a chance to look them over.
Okay. All right, the, uh, next item on the agenda is application 18 colon 522 MCC, uh, Morris Corporate Center owner, uh, 400 Interpace Parkway, block 136, slots 43.05, preliminary and final major site plan.
Good evening, everyone. Joseph O'Neil of Garofalo O'Neil Rogirio here on behalf of the applicant MCC Owner LLC. This is a, kind of a successor application to something that was approved by the board about a year ago when the building was mostly vacant, uh, to try to attract tenants. The owner at that time came in for a parking deck. We got some variances associated with exceeding maximum parking levels and such for that parking deck. Now, this current owner was able to get Teva Pharmaceuticals to come in as a tenant, and the parking deck is on the wrong side, so we are abandoning the parking deck and going with a little less parking, surface parking, all compliant with your regulations. And to talk about this, I have a couple of witnesses with me this evening. I'd like to start with Mr. Taggart from, uh, P3.
We want to do the waivers first?
Sit up here. Should we go through the waivers?
Yeah, do you have, uh?
Sure.
I'll ask Ms. Favate to go over the waivers with you, uh, Mr. O'Neil.
Um, there were waivers requested, um, some of which were not needed, um, but I'll just go through the ones that we recommend granting. Um, there's a waiver requested from the New Jersey DEP Letters regarding wetlands. Because there are no DEP regulated wetlands on the property, we recommend that waiver. Um, waiver was, was requested from, uh, the requirement to provide spot elevations. There's no new, actual new building proposed, so we recommend that as well. And similarly with floor plans. Um, utility service, um, there's no, no new building again, so no new utilities are required. Recommend that waiver. Um, solid waste disposal, given that this is really primarily parking, and we felt that that's, uh, you know, not really part of the site amenities, uh, we recommend that waiver. And then the use of the buildings, there's no, uh, no new building, no change in the use, except that it's actually going to be occupied, uh, so we recommended that waiver as well. I assume you're fine with the planning board accessing the property?
Yes.
Okay. That was it.
Okay. So, uh, motion to grant the waivers, uh, requested here.
I move the waivers listed in the, uh, planning report.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Aperelik, second.
Okay.
Aperelik, second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Aperelik?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandell?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes. Okay, proceed. With that, I'd like to get Mr. Taggart's warrant, please.
Sorry, he's a back witness?
Yes, he is.
Can you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay.
Would you state and spell your full name for the record, please?
It's Artur Taggart. A-R-T-A-G-U-R-T-A-G-A-R-T.
And your posi-, your position with whom?
Uh, I'm the Director of Construction Services for P3 Properties.
Could you speak up a little bit? Yes.
Is that, is that mic on, Nora?
It should be, Captain, the mic, it should be on.
Yeah. Can you hear it?
Yeah. P3 properties, you said?
Okay. Mr. Taggart? Thank you, sir. Mr. Taggart, uh, you heard my description of what's going on here. Uh, is that relatively accurate?
It is.
So could you describe for the board, please, the process of, uh, it was vacant? You had a significant vagancy there?
So, uh, at the time, prior to the, the new amendment, we were probably occupying about, uh, approximately 69%. After this amendment, uh, we're now at 99%.
And that's with the addition of, uh, Teva Property?
They had already had some existing space there. Uh, they occupied, uh, mostly, uh, Building A, which is on the far west side of the, the complex, and then three unoccupied floors in Building B, which is on the east side of the apartment lot, which was, um, the proposed location for the, uh, parking deck.
They're consolidating their operations out of Pennsylvania coming to Parsippany, is that it?
That's correct. They're, uh, they're bringing most of, well, they're bringing all of their office administrative, uh, personnel and resources to Parsippany. They'll still have distribution and manufacturing in Pennsylvania, but their primary office headquarters will be here locally.
Uh, one of the requirements that they had is they wanted some more parking here on site?
So, they occupied Building A, which is on the far west side, uh, then will be taking up Building B as well, uh, three floors of that building, which is adjacent to Building A on the west side. So, uh, one of the material conditions, uh, was that we put some focus on trying to provide some excessive parking to the expansion area, which is Building B on the west side.
So the parking deck that was previously approved is basically on the wrong side of the building?
It is.
So the surface parking is, uh, is this what they're looking for?
It is, exactly, what they're looking for. It's situated where they can balance out their, uh, parking between, like, the two buildings, the apartment and the parking.
Thank you. I have no further questions for this witness. Uh, do you have any questions, Mr. Aperelik?
Uh, I don't believe for this witness, no.
Okay. Andrew, do you have any, uh?
No. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I'm just curious as to how the parking could have been on the wrong side. How did that come about? The plans were approved for it, right?
The parking was done on spec. The owner at the time thought that that was the most appropriate place to put a parking deck. This is a summary, by the way, of the testimony from the prior application that I handled, and is contained in the resolution. So there was no tenant at that time for the, uh, parking. Is that correct, Mr. Taggart?
It is.
So that, that portion of the building where the parking deck was proposed to be located, that's not being occupied yet?
It is being populated now. At the time when, uh, the, the resolution was passed or if it was going through planning for the, uh, parking deck, the entire building was empty, uh, and the only thing was support services for the other, uh, functioning quarters. Um, it's since been repopulated with Kevin employees as they start to expand and build out, uh, the Building B, uh, area as well as do some renovations to Building A.
Okay. Any members of the, uh, board have any questions for this witness? Any members of the public have any questions for this witness? If anyone want to come forward, I'll close the public portion. Thank you, Mr. Taggart. With that, I'll call Mr. Coakley.
Would you raise your right hand, please? You swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Would you state and spell your name loudly for the record?
J E S X E C O K.
Mazur?
N A S.
Would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience?
Sure, so.
Try to use the microphone.
Uh, I'm a principal associate with Mazur Consulting. I've been involved with land development activities for almost 14 years now. I got my bachelor's degree, uh, in 2005 from Manhattan College in Civil Engineering. I am licensed in New Jersey and New York. I've been a professional engineer since 2012. I've testified and accepted floor boards in New Jersey. Although, this is my first time in New Jersey.
Anyone have any question? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coakley. You've had an opportunity, uh, you've actually designed the, uh, site. You drew the plans, is that true?
That is correct.
Excuse me, does he have to be sworn in?
He was sworn in.
Oh, I missed that.
We can do it again if you like. It was exciting.
Mr. Coakley, using the exhibits that we've, uh, prepared, why don't you go through and show the board what it is we're proposing here?
Sure. I'm gonna stand up and speak loud.
And take the microphone with you, it'll help.
Is it, is it working?
If it's working, it'll help.
I don't think, I don't think it is.
It says it's on.
And, yeah.
Not on? Shall I give him my microphone?
I'm not sure yours is working on. Oh, yes, it is, yeah, okay.
No one cares for this. Give me your mic. How about that? All right. All right, so as, uh, Mr. O'Neil stated...
Um, before we proceed, Mr. Coakley? Sure. Were these submitted as part of the plans, or these are created exhibits? They are created exhibits for tonight. Okay, so can we mark them? Certainly. How do you want to do it? A1, this one? Okay. So A1 is entitled MCC Blue, Care of MCC Owner, comma, LLC across the top. It is a Google Earth imagery of the site. Um, if the board's not familiar, uh, Route 80th to the south below the page, Route 46 is to the north above the top of the page. Um, the MCC, formerly 3, now MCC Blue Campus sits in the middle of the page here. Again, this is an aerial from Google Earth. And on this plan, it's the whole property, but really we're focusing on three separate areas. One, the main addition is going to be a parking lot, surface parking lot for Building A on the west side of the property. There will be a slight addition to the parking area in front of Buildings B and C, and then a resurfacing, if you will, of the existing basketball courts to create more parking spaces for Building D.
Mr. Coakley, for the benefit of those that weren't here when this was originally approved, where was the parking garage?
So the parking garage was going to go right over essentially where this bark, uh, the basketball courts are for Building D.
Okay, thank you.
Just, uh, another question.
Sure.
When was the picture taken? When was the Google Maps?
So, I just went on there today also, and I, obviously, this is the, the construction here, so the aerial imagery, I think, is from 2018, 2017, when Google Earth was there?
You know, 2005?
Yeah. No, no, it's, it's more recent than that.
So, in the picture, what was, uh, what I remember Dinsmore was talking about is the construction area for UPS, which is...
Correct, to the east, yep. So, as, uh, Mr. O'Neil said, um, really, it's worth noting, um, that in addition to the parking deck application, there was also a formal application in 2013 for some landscaping improvements in the center of the property. Those, um, the applicant still looks to maintain the right to make those improvements for the property, um, in the future. Uh, those were only aesthetic in nature. It would, did not trigger any other, uh, stormwater treatment requirements, um, to that effect. So, as Mr. O'Neil said, it is the intention to no longer seek to construct the proposed parking deck, uh, that was the subject of the 2017 application, um, but instead move forward with this application here tonight. So, as Mr. Taggart said, really it's to better serve the tenant that is now going to occupy the space by locating the parking closer, the majority of the new parking closer to Building A. The second exhibit that I have is a little bit more of a zoomed-in version. I'll label this A2 with today's date as well. This is a zoomed-in version of the same aerial photograph from the prior exhibit, but it focuses on a colorized version of the site plan, which was submitted, showing the actual parking lot superimposed over the Google aerial imagery. So this is the parking lot A for Building A with 154 new spaces created. This is the strip in the front of the building for B and C, which is a net increase of 39 spaces. And then for Building D, it's the conversion of the area which, uh, is currently basketball courts to get an increase of 33 spaces. So the total is 226 new spaces.
The total onsite?
The total onsite, so the...
1,864 spaces? That's down from the, where the parking deck was, 2,120 spaces.
Correct. It is worth noting that the, uh, ordinance has both a minimum and a maximum requirement for the parking spaces. Currently, the site is under the minimum. This would bring it above the minimum, still below the maximum, whereas the parking deck exceeded the maximum, and Mr. O'Neil noted a variance was required for that. So now we are in compliance with the, uh, town ordinance. 1,864 spaces. Um, part of this application requires, um, really just resurfacing in this area, so it's not new impervious, but to add these spaces for B and C and the new parking lot for, uh, Building A, it's an increase in impervious surface of about one and a quarter acres. That does increase the lot coverage from about 41.3% to almost 46%. That is still less than the 70% maximum permitted by the ordinance. There are no variances required for this application, and there's no increase in building square footage as part of this application. It's strictly the parking lot. To mitigate the additional runoff, some proposed stormwater facilities are being proposed. There are manufactured treatment devices to provide water quality along with a subsurface, um, detention basin. Recharge is not an applicable requirement due to the project location in the metropolitan planning area. Landscaping, our team had a pre-application meeting with Jim Walsh from, uh, Parks and Forestry. He has informally blessed the application, but requested that we coordinate with him in the field after demolition stakeout has occurred, uh, prior to any further construction to establish, um, the limit of disturbance and evaluate the trees at that time. He also requested the option to further review the buffering and landscaping upon the time of the proposed landscaping being installed. The applicant has no problem agreeing to both of those, um, requests. Right now, we are proposing seven new trees and 26 new shrubs along the perimeter of the parking lot to help supplement what existing vegetation will remain after the construction is complete. It's also worth noting that in parking lot D, there will be a small pill island created, which is a little bit additional landscaping or, or green space. Um, we have reviewed the letters from the engineer and the planner. Um, we can also agree to some additional landscaping per the review letters, but again, um, we'll work with Jim Walsh and the, the Parks and Forestry Department on that. Also, as part of this application, there is some proposed lighting improvements for the new parking areas. For parking lot A, we're proposing some new poles that'll be approximately 20 feet high that will match the fixtures that are around the rest of the campus. Similarly, uh, in the new pill island for D, uh, parking lot D will be another 20-foot fixture to help illuminate that area where there isn't light. Uh, and then along the perimeter of the new spaces for B and C will be some new lights there, um, as well. Environmental, at the request, we did perform, hang on one second, I have some notes here. We did do a, uh, kind of like a cursory curbside review of the adjacent properties. There are wetlands to the south and to the east. They do not cross the road to the property, um, and there's no indication that any well in or, any other regulated presence will have a buffer that would extend beyond, uh, Interpace Parkway and into the, the property. So there's no, um, impact to wetlands. We can provide a memo to that effect as well.
How about other environmental constraints such as steep slopes? Have you had a chance to take a look at that?
We did. So there is, there are, I should say, there are, uh, some existing steep slopes in the area of parking lot A that are going to be disturbed. The ordinance kind of breaks things down from 15 to 20%, 20 to 25, and then 25 or greater. Um, and then it further restricts the maximum area of disturbance and development within those slope ranges. So, we are well below the thresholds for that. Um, we can provide a graphic and a, a calculation to demonstrate that, but the, um, 25% or greater is only about 6% of this area being disturbed. Uh, the 20 to 25% is about 1%, and 15 to 20% is about 2% of the, of the disturbed area. So, uh, s- the maximums are 15, 25, and 35 respectively, so we're, you know, well, well below those maximums. Um, another item that I think is worth touching on is, uh, is traffic. So, traffic is typically analyzed on a, uh, building square footage, um, use for offices. Since we are not increasing any building square footage as part of this, uh, the traffic impact from that aspect is not, is not increasing. We are not changing the, uh, points of connection for the actual site itself, and as I mentioned before, we're actually bringing the site into compliance with the minimum and not exceeding the maximum number of parking spaces. One other thing that's worth mentioning is some of the other permits that are required. Obviously here tonight, but also the soil moving application. Right now, the site proposes to, uh, be graded, especially for the, uh, parking lot A, uh, about 4,900 cubic yards of soil to be moved. Uh, that's roughly 7,500 yards of, um, cut and 2,600 cubic yards of fill. Uh, the route of travel would be to Route 80 or 287 and 46 to Walsh Drive or Interpace Parkway. The tree inventory was not provided, as Jim Walsh, uh, explicitly did not require it. We did submit an SCD application on November 20th, 2018. Received a response on December 20th, um, and we will do the revisions and reply in connection with, um, any revisions that are required to the plans from, from the board here, and resubmit and obtain that certification prior to final approval. Uh, we did submit a exemption letter to the county on November 6th. They did not grant that exemption because we are disturbing more than one acre, so we resubmitted the plans on January 9th with the full stormwater report for their review. We haven't gotten updated comments on that yet. I am in receipt of both the planner's, uh, comment letter and the engineer's comment letter. Uh, there's a couple that request some points of testimony. I think I may have answered some of them already, but just to clarify all those points, I'll go through those, um, pretty briefly now. So, um, the planner's letter dated December 20th in, uh, in Appendix A, the general requirements, I think Mr. O'Neil already said that the, uh, the applicant is granting the board permission to enter the property. Form 5, the preliminary major site plan, and, uh, details and requirements. I kind of went through the impacts to the environment and the traffic with the steep slopes and the, uh, wetlands and the stormwater and the landscaping that we're proposing. Right now, as part of this application, there are no additional directional signs proposed for this. I think that was one of the comments from the planner. The location of construction materials and equipment should be discussed. Right now, most of them, um, are typically located in the corner of parking lot D. It's kind of the mo- most remote area from the rest of the facility, um, so that's probably where it would be done. There may be some minor staging in parking lot A as opposed to having the vehicles traverse the whole site during construction, um, but that would be obviously before, uh, the improvements actually get put in there. Once those are there, they, they wouldn't be there anymore. I did discuss, uh, traffic already, but, um, just to reiterate, we're not increasing building square footage, and therefore no, no increase, um, to traffic is expected. Site will continue to operate with the current driveways. The tree removal for the new parking lot, um, there will, there will be about 50,000 square feet of, uh, of disturbance, a little over an acre for that specific spot. As discussed before, we went over this with Jim Walsh, um, and he wants to be kept in a loop in an integral part of the construction process, so we have no problem working with him, um, to that effect.
Thank you, Mr. Coakley. I have no further questions. How many trees are you removing?
So, a specific tree study was not done, um, to identify that number of trees. Jim Walsh didn't ask for that number, uh, when we had the pre-application meeting with him. He thought once we had the plan approved, it would be best to go out, stake the limit of disturbance, and then evaluate, um, the trees at that point.
Was Mr. Walsh's opinion at the pre-meeting that there was no significant valuable trees that would be lost as part of this application?
I believe that was his takeaway, yes. It's fairly thin, if you're driving down Interpace Parkway, you know, traveling south, I understand now that leaves are off, but it isn't very dense, um, in this area. You have pretty clear sightlines to the building as is, so, um, from that respect, the trees, as much as possible, will be left along the buffer, uh, along the perimeter, and then additional shrubs and trees are proposed, you know, where possible.
You testified that you were replacing seven trees. It's safe to say that you're removing more than seven trees?
Yes.
And a guess as to how many more?
That would be tough to say. Um, I, I, I couldn't say. Couldn't say exactly how many without, without a, an accurate tree.
Twenty, 50?
Probably closer to, to 50.
And you're replacing seven?
Seven are proposed.
So you're agreeing to do what Mr. Walsh tells you after the onsite?
That is correct.
Mr. Walsh had some very specific ideas that he wanted to implement post-approval, and we have committed to work with Mr. Walsh. Okay, good. Um, lighting, you said you're, you're putting in 20-foot, uh, light poles on this new parking area, parking areas?
Yes.
Okay. And there, there's, there's no residence nearby that would affect...
No.
The lighting would be on, uh, dusk to dawn, or, uh...
Um, they're gonna be similar to the lights that are there now, so the same hours that are there now. I'd have to refer to Mr. Taggart on the hours on the lighting.
Okay, and ac- access to these new parking areas would be similar to the lots that you have there now?
Yes, so...
Isle width and that sort of?
Yes, meeting the town ordinance requirements.
Okay, I don't believe we have any comment from the, uh, fire department on that, uh, but you've done the studies, the turning radiuses and so forth for fire apparatus is adequate?
Yes.
All right. Um, now are you planning on doing all three of these areas at the same time, or are you going to do one and move to the next one, or how are you...
Um, I would think from a construction standpoint, they would be done one at a time.
Okay.
But not staged? No, no, no. They would be done as one project.
Okay, and pedestrian access to these parking lots from the building?
Yes, we are providing that. We're putting in a crosswalk here at this spot. These are, there are parking spaces in this area. They're just being expanded here for additional spaces. These are in the middle of the parking lot that exists, so the pedestrian walkways are already there.
That's the basketball courts up there.
Correct, sorry, yes, D.
These crosswalks, is it just paint, or are you delineating with pavers or something like that?
These are just paint, striping.
Okay. Mr. Coakley, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, we, we defer to the township forester, obviously, on, on tree removal, on tree replacement mitigation. We, we offered some suggestions in our memo, you know, something that is striking about this property and yet not unique when you look at office properties in Parsippany is there's little to no vegetation within the parking areas themselves in the medians. So we would suggest doing what you can on that front. Obviously, visibility is important for safety reasons. And then to the greatest extent that you can beef up that buffer. I mean, it is somewhat thin already, which means it'll be thinner when those trees are gone. So we would just suggest anywhere you can find space for more trees. And we, we did offer, if you want, could, to lose those four spaces. I don't know if you know the ones I'm talking about?
These here?
Right there at, at that sort of knuckle. Since you do exceed the, the minimum, it's really entirely up to the applicant. They know what spaces they need. But if you were going to lose any spaces, it seemed like those might make sense, particularly given the configuration, but also that that's sort of the narrow point of the buffer and would provide a bit of an opportunity to expand that. So something else to consider in that regard. And, and Mr. Chairman, I don't want to give short shrift to my co-professional, Andrew. I don't think that the witness went through his memo yet.
No, not, not yet. And I had a few questions whenever you.
Yeah, but that, that's, we, we really were primarily focused or concerned about the landscaping and then tree mitigation.
Mr. Coakley, I came to report to you that we did see your comment regarding losing the parking spaces approached the new tenant, who was pretty adamant that they wanted parking spaces.
I can't say I'm shocked, but we thought we would offer it.
Surprise.
They actually asked us if there were four more spaces we could find from some of the others. It took to be not so much a joke as a threat.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to? Yes, but he didn't review his memo yet. Do you want to go through that, Joe, or do you just want Mr. Congiorno's comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just so, going back to the application, the prior applications, you explained the 2017 parking deck is being removed, is no longer will be sought. The 2013 improvements that you kind of show on the plans, dashed lines, what was the scope of the 2013 approval that I understand you still want to do those improvements?
So those were pretty aesthetic and cosmetic in nature. They were really just in the landscaped areas. They involved pavers, new like planter boxes. It was a almost exact like-for-like in terms of impervious surface with sidewalks and other gathering areas and benches and, and, you know, some low-level lighting, I believe, as well.
And these improvements do not impact those proposed improvements?
Correct, separate.
All right, so that clarifies that. So that will be done at some future time?
Yes, presumably.
The critical slopes, steep slopes, thank you for the testimony. You will be revising the plans and submitting the actual numbers.
We'll submit an exhibit, yeah, with exact calculations as well.
Soil testing for the stormwater detention basin, has that been done yet? That is a requirement.
We did, we did. We got some infiltration rates that were three inches per hour or greater, and we did not encounter groundwater in the test pits, but we will formalize those with, you know, the borings as well and, or the test pit logs, I should say, and submit that with the revised report.
Incorporate that to the stormwater report.
Absolutely.
As well as us, the county, will be looking for that as well.
Yes.
Regarding the lighting, I have no issue with the new lighting proposed. What is the lighting comparable to the, the height of lighting and type of lighting comparable to the existing lighting in the lot?
That's our intention, yes.
Do you have the height of the existing poles?
I think they're about 20 feet, 18 feet. I didn't, I didn't measure them exactly, but that's what my eyes telling me.
That's most of it. And again, the forester, we defer to the forester on the tree planting. We noticed, we note by particularly where, where the planner had just mentioned by the four spaces there, there is a, going to be a cut due to retaining wall in that area too. And the reinforcement for the retaining wall will, will be toward the right of way and toward the edge of the property. So you, even though the parking will be lower than the roadway there, you're still going to really have to remove all that planting along with that retaining wall is to get the wall installed.
Yeah, we have to explore.
Again, anything you can do, really try and focus on that because that, that'll really just look completely bare of any vegetation, you know, other than grass or whatever you go. Even some low shrubs or something would be, would be, would be appropriate if you couldn't get any trees there.
That was the focus of Mr. Walsh in the meeting. He's very much interested in easing up that most for lack of better words.
That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, on the lighting, can I just offer that if, if it turns out that the existing poles are 18 feet, you consider going down to 18 for the new poles?
Yeah, that's our intention is to, to match what's there.
Just match whatever's there.
Sure thing.
Mr. Congiorno, the proposed drainage areas are adequate for the?
Yes, we reviewed, we reviewed the stormwater report. It complies with the requirements. It's generally a well-thought-out design. We have several housekeeping items that, just things we noted that he'll, he'll, if he complies with the letter, I'm sure he's going to agree to comply with the letter. He's just got to make some minor revisions to different things and add, and add some additional detail on a few of the items. But it's the, the content is there, the, the approach is appropriate approach and complies.
Could I, would there have been any opportunity for some green infrastructure, stormwater?
Well, what we're, what we're trying to do now that we have the results is to try to do a little bit of infiltration, keep the size of the overall system down as much as possible. So that's one of the things we're really going to try to do.
Any members of the board have any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Coakley, could you comment on ADA parking, where it would be, how much, how many there are?
So as part of this, we do have to increase the number of ADA parking spaces. So we're going to provide those in the existing parking deck. We're going to re-stripe some spaces. So that's why when you see the numbers presented in the application as net, it's because one of the existing spaces in the, in the garage is going to be striped to allow for handicap. And that will bring it into compliance.
Is it your expectation that the steep slope disturbance won't rise to the level of requiring a variance?
Certainly, yes, absolutely. There, the, the lowest number in the requirements is about 15 percent, and the most of our disturbance is 6 percent, if you're, if you're being generous. So it will not exceed that.
Now, with the increase in the parking, a rather dramatic increase in the parking, is there going to be a significant increase in the density of population of the expected workers in this thing to the point where we should be concerned with that?
No, so the population and density is really based on the building square footage that exists there today. The parking is really just going to serve the population better.
Okay, so you're saying that the parking will fit the size of the building, the square footage of the building itself?
Correct.
I think the reason Mr. Dinsmore is asking this is we've had over the past few years several applications where they're squeezing more people into fewer square feet and looking for increased parking. And we want to make sure that's not what's going on here. Any other members of the board have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, how many entrance ways and exits do you have in your plan?
So these don't change any of the existing entrance ways. Right now, I'm going to go back to A1, which is like the overall. There's the entrance to the north, which comes off, I guess, Walsh Drive and then Interpace Parkway. There is a main entrance to the west to Interpace Parkway. And then there are two additional that go towards the south to Upper Pond Road. That's not changing as part of this, but you can access these from all of those driveways. What you will see in parking lot A, switching back to Exhibit A2, you come in the southwest entrance, that's where you'll be able to gain access to the new lot. And then there's a second one up at the top, which is closer to the entrance on the west side.
Has anybody looked into the amount of traffic during any given hour entering the complex?
At this point, it was rather difficult with the complex being empty. So did you answer, was there a study done about the projections of the traffic? I know that there was preliminary study.
Yeah, we had done an original look, but again, because it's based on the building square footage and the industry standard is really based on the use, based on the building. So that isn't being changed as part of this application. So the one that was part of the parking deck examination or any prior ones, prior applications is still accurate because there's no changes to the building. So we're not increasing or decreasing the amount of traffic. We're just giving them more places to park.
So we're going with the existing traffic? Is that what we're doing?
Well, it's, it's, it's a projection of the full space, yes.
What's not on Exhibit A1, which is existing there now, is UPS was put in, there's additional roadway surface that's been added to the complex. So traffic is supposedly doing much easier now with the expansion of Upper Pond Road as UPS, which is not on that floor.
All right.
The, the traffic was originally based on the original building when it was constructed, based on the square footage. This is how many cars.
But we haven't really experienced any traffic.
Not until after the building's occupied for actual experience.
So there's two ways out now.
Right.
Where historically, when the complex was built, there was only that one way out. Isn't that rough, Mr. Chairman?
That is correct.
I remember something about that.
Any other board members have any questions? Any member of the public have any questions for this witness? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion.
That was my last witness, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any comments from any members on the dais? Any comments from anyone in the public? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public portion and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, an application 18 colon 522, MCC owner, LLC 400, Interpace Parkway, Block 136, Lots 43, Spot 05, preliminary, I move that we grant preliminary and final major site plan subject to working, well?
If I may?
Yes, thank you.
In addition to our usual set of conditions, the applicant will consult with the township forester and implement his proposals regarding landscaping entries.
We did also ask for a major soil.
We'll do that after, after we finish this. The steep slope is supposed to be provided?
Is there a condition with the steep slope?
They'll go work with the engineer to, to determine whether or not there's any need for a variance.
That'll be on our revised plan. Our position is there's no.
And there was something else?
Right. Yep.
The proposed lighting matches the existing lighting and height?
Well, we've dropped that to 18 feet.
Are we matching it, or are we going to be 18 feet?
Well, you should match it. I mean, if it's, if it's 20 feet existing, then 20 feet is fine. Yeah, just match. It'd be great if it were 80.
You don't want people to have to park in the lot with the short lights.
And I would highly recommend, this is my little bugaboo, that the lights be properly shaded so that you don't, with modern LEDs, I mean, they're very bright.
That's fine.
And as long as they're boxed.
I assumed you were talking about downward.
They are downward.
Some sort of shading so that the, the hotspot of the light itself is not obvious outside of the property.
Okay. Traded such that the light, the light is pointed down.
Downward, yeah.
Yeah.
There was one other.
He was going to memorialize the environmental Detroit drainage report. Right, was he still going to look at the stormwater report, Congiorno?
Oh, yeah. You mentioned that you had favorable soil conditions of good infiltration, and you're going to, what, look to infiltrate some of this water or to maybe some?
That is correct.
A, a more?
Reduced footprint.
For better water quality, you'll get some recharge and infiltration into the system. If you're able to do that, it's a, it's, it's a better system. It's, you know, more environmentally, you know, friendly.
You mentioned providing core logs or something.
Yeah, results of our tests.
What is all that? Okay.
All right, well, I guess, yeah, because that's by, if I may, that he will look and explore options to infiltrate some of the stormwater, seeing that he has favorable soil conditions to do so.
Those sound like good conditions for my mo, motion.
There you go.
Yeah, you like that?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, do you need a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Mealy, please call the roll.
Mr. Perelwicke?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Me, Mr. Mandell?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes. Okay, let's do your soil moving application. Major soil moving permit?
We did provide testimony about the route that will be, why don't you do that again?
How many yards you're moving? Where?
5,000.
Where it's going, what hours, and all that?
The total is about 4,900 cubic yards of soil to be moved. The route of travel will be Route 80 or 287 and 46 to Walsh Drive and Interpace Parkway. And the tree inventory has not been provided as Jim Walsh did not explicitly require it.
We're asking about the soil moving permit at this point. What's the, what are the days, what are the hours that it's going to be going?
So those would be weekdays, non-holidays during construction hours, typically 7:30 to 3:30 PM, 7:30 AM to 3:30 PM.
Monday to Saturday?
Correct.
You're fairly close to Route 80 at that point, so I assume that you would be staying away from routes that would typically be taken by school buses and pickups for schoolchildren and stuff like that. You'd be sticking to the ma, truly, truly major roads.
Correct.
Well, just Cherry Hill Road, and there's no stop, bus stops there, buses may travel.
Did I, did I understand the route correctly, just for the, that Route 82, Route 287, or Route 46 to Walsh Drive or Interpace Parkway?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. At 7:30 hour, you're going to hit a lot of traffic on 80, the 82, 87 interchange.
Yeah, 80 eastbound is a zoo at that.
287, yeah.
Yeah.
So your trucks now to go slow, because that's what they're going to do.
Yeah.
Till 3 o'clock, and you said Monday through Saturday? You're going to work Saturday as well?
If need be, yes. We like to have that option.
Approximately, how many truckloads is this, 5,000 yards?
Depends on the size of the truck.
And this will be over a period of time if you're doing these lots one at a time?
Correct.
Are you moving soil from all of the lots or just the one next to A?
Really, it's just A. That's, that's the big one. I think some will be needed to fill for B and C.
So some of it may be staying on site?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that 5,000 is like the net amount.
How many trucks?
It'd probably be about 50 trucks throughout the life of the project.
Oh, probably more like, if we check your math, about 20 yards, 17 yards a truck.
Oh.
I, I estimate just about maybe 280 trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
One, one truck for every tree they're removing.
Mr. Zirat, sorry.
We had you on the spot with the calculator.
Mr. Zirat, sorry.
Have you identified a likely destination?
No.
Oh, okay.
All right, any questions on the soil moving? Will need a motion to recommend into the governing body. We'll need a motion to recommend into the governing body.
I move that we recommend to the governing body an acceptance of this soil moving permit as presented.
Second, Hernandez.
Hernandez, seconds, please call the roll.
Mr. Aperilic?
Yes.
Mr. Dinsmore?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Mandell?
Yes.
Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Chairman Keller?
Yes.
Good luck.
Thank you everyone, have a nice evening.
You too. Can I have a motion to go and do a closed session for about five minutes?
So moved.
Second, you said a purpose on the record?
To discuss retaining walls. Is there a motion to come out of close?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion to adjourn the planning board meeting.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Your motion to adjourn? For adjourned.
That's a good...
Make it up, Nora.
Nora, fill in names. Make sure there were people that were here.
We will, we will be doing master plan discussion at the first February meeting. And we're gonna be giving you some reading material in advance, so stay tuned.
Emailing that or?
Yeah, I'll email it.